Okay, uh, call the meeting order, uh, first. And the agenda is the public hearing for the use of money from the equipment expendable trust fund for the first of the new cafeteria garbage disposal. We've got some handout in the blue folders showing like a couple of different options.
It's like three different, yes.
Three different, oh yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'll meet the specs for what we need, basically the replacement of the current one.
Is there a recommended one out of these three, or they said they all need the specs of what we need?
Yeah, they all need the specs, right?
Mark, which, which one?
Which one do you want recommended?
The whole bar can go directly in with there, so you can place it in the house.
Well, okay.
They'll put all the dapper kits or anything on it.
So it's a simple swap out?
Yes.
There's no warranty issues with that, Mark?
What's that?
Is there any warranty issue with that?
Yeah, the whole bar there is, five year. The other one I think it says three year on it, or might not be on the paper. The whole bar is a little bit more expensive, but the last one lasts us, what, thirty something years?
The only, the only cheaper one is the first one, right? It's fifty bucks.
Yeah, it's actually where I'm purchasing it, that's all.
Yeah, and then we have to pay hassle to put it in.
Well, we could put it in house, we take, yeah, then that, we'd have to pay someone to put it in, yes.
But it's still covered the warranty of?
Yes.
Does it still cover it if they don't have some of the license put in there?
Yeah.
Cause it's as is?
Yeah.
In kind.
You said it's a fine warranty, is that included or is that separate?
That is included.
Okay, so that's all in this frame?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Shipping for the whole bar?
Yeah, there might be some shipping charges in there.
Okay.
How do you figure that in?
We'll have to add a little extra in there to cover potential shipping.
So up to fifteen hundred?
Yeah.
It says ship free.
Does it?
Oh, it does?
Ship free with, ship free with somebody?
This is where you'd be getting it from, Mark?
What's that?
This is where we would be getting from?
Yeah, Webshot had the best price.
Webshot.
Okay, cause it does say it ships free on the bottom there.
Yeah.
So it ships free?
I overlooked that one. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With you picking it up, ships free.
With a ten thousand dollar purchase.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't say with what?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, Webshot.
We'll go fifteen hundred and a half, that'll be safe, okay. Yeah, absolutely.
I make a motion to approve the use of fifteen hundred dollars in the facility expendable trust fund for the use of, for the purpose of buying a new, uh, garbage disposal for the sink in the, uh, high school cafeteria.
Thanks Jen, thanks Joe, just to amend that a little bit, it's the equipment expendable trust fund.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Uh, any further discussion? Community? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstentions, alright, so that passes. So at this point, we will adjourn to the regular scheduled school board meeting. Do you want me to take a vote for adjournment for the hearing? I think so, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, can I get a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Vance.
Same.
Thank you, Jen, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, abstentions? Alright, moving on, uh, approval of minutes, April seventeenth, two thousand nineteen. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the minutes from April seventeen, two thousand nineteen. Thank you, Vance. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thanks, Joe. Uh, as far as corrections, I did have one, or two, two spots in the same spot. The second page under new business, uh, under B, the grading system. After where it says past fail went from a sixty to a seventy, it says the school board discussed this but did not approve it. We never discussed it prior to, the only time we ever discussed this after it's already in place. So I think that should be amended to say the school board discussed, uh, after it's been implemented, but did not approve it. And then the following line says, you know, Tony Draper recently found out the school board should have approved this. I just wanna add that that should be, I found out per policy. I've got the policy name, I don't think we discussed that, but I did mention that. Uh, and then I don't have any other corrections. Anyone else? You good? Uh, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions?
Obstain.
Alright, Vance. Uh, the approval of the non-public minutes, do we have non-public minutes?
We do not have non-public minutes, Brian, we'll see if we can do that at the next meeting.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, moving on to communication, correspondence, I did receive two things. One was the, an invitation to the Charter Academy fifteenth year celebration. They actually sent us a thing to RSVP by, so we want to go to the event and the dinner could, uh, take place on June first in Whitefield that evening, uh, I cannot attend that, uh, because I had gone to go, we just to the S A U office and use it. Uh, June first, right? Yes.
It is, I think it's thirty first of May.
Yeah, we have to RSVP by the fifteenth. We have a little time to decide, you wanna go, Vance? You wanna see the real choices? Uh, one other piece of correspondence is, uh, we had a thank you card addressed to the school board, uh, from Kristy Morris, saying thank you for the opportunity to teach at a new public school. I've loved my twenty-one years here, I will continue to do my very best, sincerely, Kristy Morris.
Thank you for that.
For, for, for us letting her teach here. For the opportunity to teach at a new public school. She sent us in a card last year as well. That's all I had for correspondence, did you have anything?
I didn't have any further.
Okay. Uh, moving on to reports, business administrator, is that?
Um, the manifestor going around in that folder there, this week's payroll. Where, you know, it's kind of a busy time of year, at the end of the school year, we're in the middle of, or starting our open enrollment period for our insurances, uh, for the new year, and open enrollment is a time that anyone can make changes to their insurance, so they wanna add dependents, uh, take off dependents, change plans, whatever, they can do all that now. So that's going on, um, you know, starting to get in orders for next year's budget, and just all the end of the year stuff is going on. On the agenda is, um, something about the bond, the, the next step in the bond process. We have been approved for our bond, um, and there's just a lot of paperwork going along the way, so when we get to that, um, we'll go over that.
Okay.
That's the science of bond?
Yes, yeah.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Uh, superintendent's report, Judy.
Okay, so Deb, Mark, and Stuart Anderson and myself met with Cobb Hill this week. What is very good about this, this company is that they set up meetings on a, on a regular basis. And, uh, sometimes it's two weeks, depending on how much time they need to, to do what they need to do, um, to bring forward any changes and, um, or to bring forward the next step. And so we'll be meeting in another couple of weeks as well, and that will be throughout the whole entire project. And they watch the timelines and they let us, and that, we have the meetings face to face, but they also communicate through, um, email and everyone receives the email, and so everyone knows, it's, it's really, it's good to, good to see. And so we're moving forward with the, you know, the bids that are coming in, and, and so far, we're on, a piece of wood. On schedule.
Good.
Uh, the middle school windows are in and they look great, and they were installed during the local location. They really did a good job, they're right, they went right to town on it. And the air conditioning unit is in, sorry about that stuff. And, um, in my memo, it said it was almost complete, and now it is complete, okay.
AC? Yes. If I'm correct, it kicked on last night during the Coral concert?
It did kick on.
It works.
Refresh.
Yeah, down there? Oh, yeah, it was, yeah.
I didn't even notice it.
It did.
Um, I did put in another copy of the survey results, just for those who did not, you know, have it with them this week because we wanted to, it's on the agenda to discuss this week. And Deb and I did attend a funding meeting in Plymouth. Last week was very interesting, and gave the information in, in your packet. They are going to send us a packet of the information with all of our communities.
With our numbers.
With our numbers.
Okay.
And so they only, um, when they knew that we were coming, they added a few of our numbers to the presentation, but there's more information that they can get, and they're going to get it for, for the district, so they'll send it to us when we get it. It's very, this really.
Who put them these on?
John Tobin, he's an attorney, um, a retired attorney, and he's been going around.
Yeah.
But he's done thirty-one, thirty-two presentations throughout the state.
Have these like, what's his angle?
Well, his was, he was the attorney who, um, did the clamoring. So, you know, just coming back on again and, and trying to show that the, the funding, the, the system's broken.
But he's looking for a change, he's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they already, like, three bills now going through right now that, you know, coming, I think a lot of it came out of these meetings, you know, to start. It's more to educate people.
Making people more aware, aware of what the funding, what it looks like now.
Yeah.
Changes need to be made, not what changes, because.
But, I, I mean, I, I'm concerned about giving all our information from one source, particularly if they have some sort of, if, if they're on one side or the other, if there's somebody who's for funding reform, you know, and they're going to provide us with the numbers and we're gonna make, I don't know what kind of effect it's gonna have on us generally, but if you guys are making budget decisions based on numbers from a single source, that may be a little bit, you know.
Well, the, the data that they have, that they present, is data from the Department of Ed, which is, data the Department of Ed has, comes from the districts.
Oh.
So it's our, it's our data, and they're just, you know, going on, online and getting it and then putting, presenting it in a way in which is understandable, you know, type of thing. I'm very neutral, it was a very neutral, it was very good.
Do you feel like, um, I think we might have asked, I might have asked you this last time, but after a broken meeting, does it seem like it's gonna have much of an effect on our district?
On our district, not like, yeah, no, probably not. But, I mean, across the state, you may see a difference, because it's not just, it's just not schools. It's the whole, he, he kinda focused a little bit on the whole system of, of monies within the state, and how, and how that money's, you know.
How education's funding, funded primarily through property taxes, which affects every taxpayer in the state.
So it was, it was really, it was really interesting. Lasted two hours, it was supposed to do an hour, but it just kept going, and the people were really interested in it. Uh, let's see, there is a new scheduled emergency plan meeting, um, for May thirteenth at nine thirty, and that will be in the high school conference room. And I did, um, send in, which isn't on my memo, but I did send a, uh, a communication to Barrett Christina for, regarding the, um, strategic plan. And so we did contact Mark Dolan's, and sometimes what ends up happening is, is Mark Dolan and Barrett come up and visit the board and find out what it is that they want, and, you know, what they want, what they're looking for. And then they'll determine, you know, how much time is gonna be needed, you know, what the cost would be, and, and whatever, so. I would just be looking, thinking of a, a time in which they could come and present, and, or we could present to them or answer any questions as far as what we would want the strategic plan to be focusing on. So.
I mean, do we have a, I know we've talked about this for a while now, I mean, am I safe to assume that that's something that both they and us are willing to, I think us starting this process with summer.
Right.
Is that something they're willing to, to give us passing?
Yeah, they usually do it during the summer.
Okay.
You know, because it's, you know, you need a few hours to do each, you know, do an hour.
We've talked about it on off a little over here now.
Right, so my, my, I'm envisioning that you would give them a copy of your goals, the school board goals that you currently have, and then they could look at those, and you would say that, you know what, what we tend to do is, we, we stay, stay with the same goals because they broaden us, and that what ends up happening is the, the objectives of the goals come through the administration. So if they say, if a goal would say something like facilities, you upkeep, you know, the facilities and da-da, well, we already have a, a facilities committee, and, and that's a process we follow, and anything that comes up goes through the facilities committee and then goes to the, to the board. So those are the types of, of, you know, planning. You have a lot of planning in place, but, and they can, they can give you different, you know, ideas of, of what different strategic plans in districts look like, so that you can say, oh yeah, that's something I would, you know, we would like to look at, or, you know, whatever.
Do we only have one meeting in June?
Hmm.
Is it, uh, I don't have in front of me.
Nineteen.
I mean, it, it might be helpful for us as a board, I don't know what you guys think, but if we have a, a board meeting, what, sure.
Yeah.
Just a big board initiative or workshop, just to discuss what, what we want out of that, rather than just handing them goals and committees, I mean, there are certain things, and we talked about a year ago, that we like to see how many guidance on, link to facilities, on staffing, on funding, on, on everything. We're on the same page before they come up.
Oh.
No, when they come up and we sit here and say.
Cause I've never seen what you guys have come up with yet anyways.
Well, we've just talked, we've never.
Oh, it's not just.
The idea was the advantages of maybe having a couple do this. And I think Matt Duncan, so, uh, strategic planning, there was a lot of information, a lot of sorts, um, sort of ideas that he got out of that, that he thought would be good to implement here, but, um, didn't really feel like that he was necessarily in a position to sort of leave that charge, and so that's why we're a person outside of this. But I think he's got the, he's the idea man. He is, it's a, it's a timed process, if you only had a board meetings is.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it at a board meeting, I would say you would have to have a separate meeting for the strategic plan, just like you do for workshops, it would be a workshop type of thing, and you would, and you would do that, so. I mean, they could, you could have a first meeting, even if you don't know what you were thinking of, or just throw out your ideas. They could be there and you could get it all done. You, you don't necessarily have to have a pre-meeting before you have a meeting with them, because that would be a pre-meeting with them. You see what I mean?
We, I mean, we could, I, I envisioned, and we're seven different people, I see some of us throwing ideas, and we spend the bulk of our time on, on bringing together or shooting down with it, I just think it'd be good to come in with, this is what we like, and get their input. I mean, I guess we could do that, it depends on their availability. Does it make, I mean, does it make sense to maybe have them, just sort of give us a, a list of things that we should be thinking about? In preparation of that meeting?
Cause there could be a lot of stuff out there that we'd never even thought of, that.
Right. Let's. Then we can get something from them and just say, this is the type of things that we need you to think about. We'll have a workshop, we'll come up with our, our ideas, and then we'll meet with them, do it that way?
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
I think, you know, it might be more beneficial to have that first meeting, we don't necessarily have a meeting, a first meeting without them. Because like I said, we might all have different ideas, but, you know, we might spend a lot of time hatching it over, and then sit down with them, and they say, well, from our prior experience, they don't wanna do that, you know, we spent forty-five minutes talking about one idea, and, well, no. You know, it might be better to have them nearby and bounce those ideas off, and make it, you know, further that discussion in the right direction or discuss.
Is that happening in other workshops setting with them? That's okay.
Yes, I could, I could.
Okay. So maybe we could, prior, maybe prior to setting up that first meeting, maybe like Jay suggested, I don't know if you could reach out to them and what are the things we should be looking at?
Right.
Like, where do you guys really specialize in or are more hammering, you do this with people, like Joe said, maybe there are things that we have a problem with, and you to.
Absolutely, yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I mean, we're, not we don't even wanna get to work, we just wanted to listen, I think.
Right.
And. You know, improve the overall system by, by shaping ourselves, so.
Absolutely, okay, I can do that.
No, it's out of the bid, isn't it?
Yeah, that sounds good. If we, if we can get that.
I'll email that information to you, cause I, I don't wanna wait until the next one.
Yeah, but I'm thinking if we come in on the nineteenth, and we have our calendars, and, you know, summer's tough for everybody, if we can pick a day, then work, sort of, by a couple, and, two, twelve, something like that. At least I'm gonna start with a four on the summer.
I don't know, I don't know what to think.
Okay.
And the flooring bid, uh, is in your packet?
Yeah, yeah.
That's it.
Is this something that we'll get, I know the funds were approved for it.
Yeah, we just had.
Is this something we need to approve the expenditure of, or is that about?
The contract.
We approve.
We have to approve the, the vendor and the contract, yeah, or the bid that we were seeing. Yeah, so we can move forward and get it.
Oh, sorry. Sure is.
All right, I'll pick the floor, Scott?
Thanks, um, so, so a couple of things, uh, last Saturday, the fourth, um, Linwood hosted the Northern Music Festival, which was about fifteen schools, um, from a, near it for middle school students for both floors of band. Uh, it was an all-day event that went from about eight thirty in the morning, um, culminating in a concert. That evening at four, it was very, very well attended, and I want to thank, uh, Tom Undersea and Bob Matturo for helping to coordinate that. Uh, we also had our annual spring chorus concert, which was on May seventh. Uh, that included the chorus for elementary, middle school, and high school, and as we also got a help drive the, uh, new air conditioning system as well, so that also works. Uh, this week is teacher appreciation week, uh, so we'd like to also thank and recognize the P T S A for their contributions, that they've been doing little things for our, our teachers every single day this week. One was a, you know, was a, a coffee at Dunkin' Donuts, where they just had to show their, their I D, uh, whether it was, you know, kind of notes as far as, you know, different donations from around town. Um, this morning, the administrative team, uh, as part of our tradition, were served breakfast to the staff this morning. So we're hoping that everybody felt okay, felt the day, that nobody made bad pancakes or something like that. The, just a couple of events that are coming up, um, May eleventh, this Saturday will be prom, and there will be a post, a post-prom event held, um, through Adapt, Chad's been looking post-net, with events at the school, that'll be happening after prom, uh, from, prom goes to eleven P M, post-prom will be going until two A M. Just sort of events for, for kids to participate in. Um, and finally, on May fifteenth, next Wednesday, we do have an in-service day, uh, we'll be showing, starting at twelve thirty, um, the, you know, we'll be showing the, the film, Resilience, it's about the biology of stress, and it's about the biology of stress and the science of hope, um, that'll be at twelve thirty, uh, as part of our P T session for, for the day.
And if any board members available, certainly come and, and watch it.
I'll be here in the elementary M P R.
When is that held this concert?
That is the sixteenth of May. It's that Thursday.
Is it the sixteenth? Is it twenty-third?
Sixteen.
Sixteen, okay.
Sixteen, cause the dance recital's the twenty-third.
I've done that. Alright, thanks Scott. Uh, committee reports, I know technology committee met yesterday, I was unable to attend.
Yeah, that's okay, it was, it was, um, it was really good. Um, we talked about the, um, the eight, the bill, H B bill for the sixteen twelve, uh, H B sixteen twelve law that's going into effect, which is the confidentiality of data and, and student, um, information. And, uh, also, um, Trey reviewed the new standards, which cover that, um, bill as well, and looking at a, a new curriculum, the updated curriculum, the last curriculum we had was five years ago, so I'm gonna update this one, those have changed so quickly. So, well, that, those are the things we were looking at.
And other than, already in the last few days, some emails coming back and forth through committees, so I figured there was a lot to talk about.
Yeah, 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 that's what they were talking about. And, and how to move forward with that information, about sixteen twelve, cause it's gonna be pretty rough, you know, a lot of changes, so. Just trying to, to bring that forward. Teachers have had pieces of it, because we knew it was coming, so last, at the beginning of this year, Trey had, you know, given some of that information out, whatever information he had at the time, and as the year was going on, we received, you know, we've been receiving a little more information, it's a new law, so nobody really knows. So they were discussing, you know, how to present that to the staff and, and the strategic. And, uh, let's see, the, and then another committee, the, the next facilities committee will be on, uh, May twenty-second. And that goal for that facilities committee will be to develop a plan by June thirtieth for the tank project.
Okay.
For the what?
Tank, I'm calling it the oil tank project.
We keep changing the name of it, but, we don't know what it's about.
Piping project. Uh, and, and you should have in your board folders a report from Wayne Gillian, okay, that's in response to the board at the last meeting.
Those are the ones that we thought we had, the third meeting.
Right.
Oh, okay.
And policy met tonight?
Yeah.
Uh, we have several policies for first meeting every week.
Yeah.
One of them, next, one of them will address the data security, will, will be basically adopted, wants to take proposal from our association based on their recommendations, but there's a number of policies that we've been looking over for the past couple of months and, uh, wrote in the first reading, um, and then we're still working through the rest of the law changes from last year, and then we'll get a new document with law changes from this year, and we'll still, you know. But we'll make some progress at least, so, thanks, so that's it. We got interrupted a few times last year. Emergency issues, so, uh, but not in, uh, not in four, before tonight.
Okay. Hey, do we have any other committees that have met? Okay, uh, moving on, business requiring board action, Judy, you have any nominations, recommendations, or resignations?
I have some, it's kind of funny, I have resignations, but I, but they're resignations, not necessarily resignations, because they're just not signing their contract for next year, but I would just.
Oh, okay, so that's it.
They're staying until the end of the year.
They're not returning.
Right, they're just not returning.
Okay.
Um, we have, um, Jamie Dupuis, she's your elementary special ed teacher.
Do you have to connect the vote on accepting the twelve article?
I would, I, I do, they were on one, she didn't sign it, so, I would just say that you, you can recognize, yeah, take a vote to accept it as presented.
The fact of the resignation.
Alright, just a.
Okay.
Um, Michelle O'Connell, and those were the only two so far. She's a parent.
Who's the special?
Jamie Dupuis, the special ed teacher.
I'll make a motion to accept the notice of departures from Michelle O'Connell and Jamie Dupuis. Thank you, Vance.
One second.
Thank you, Jay. Thanks, Scott. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions?
Should we pass along and thank you for their service?
Yeah.
And was that it for?
Yes, that's it for those.
Okay, uh, the next item is the elementary, uh, multi-purpose room flooring bid. So we had in our packet, um, bid for our contract, a proposal, and this is from Connor Floors, who did our, our other multi-purpose room, the gymnasium down there a couple of years ago, but we're pretty happy with the product to date. Speak for all of us, but, you know, I'll say I was pretty happy with it. So this is a, you know, obviously replacing the flooring here, which we've talked about for a couple of years, and to get this up to a, you know, a better material, paper material, and what we've been dealing with. And we already have the funds from a warrant article, what was the, the total on that warrant article?
It was fifty.
Was it, was it?
It was fifty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, uh, well, it doesn't include something, but it still will be under budget. For a prep. Five dollars square foot. Mark, it says, on the exclusions, it says that the, uh, they don't do the floor inserts and stuff, like the volleyball stuff, they don't do it, or is that just extra, like the inserts?
By the inserts, that's all supposed to be included. But we just.
It says, it says exclusion, work on athletic or electrical floor inserts and cover plates.
Well, that's if there's anything in the floor, the plates and stuff for electrical.
Okay, that's, so that doesn't include the volleyball stuff and all that, that's all taken care of?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then also, what isn't on there is, it also has the emblem in the middle.
Oh, yeah?
The vinyl emblem.
Good. How, how do they, the, the, it's a rubberized flooring?
Believe it or not, they paint the. Believe it or not, they paint the stuff on.
I was gonna say, is it common rolls, or they kind of pour and spread it?
First is, uh, rubber mats that they lay out.
Yeah.
And then they pour sealer over the top of that.
Yeah.
And then on top of that, there's, um, the coloring, or whatever, another, another layer.
Yeah.
And that's what the, uh, like, I'd like to go with the brown wood grain floor look. And then they paint the lines on, and after that hides, and then they seal it.
Okay.
And then the ceiling is good for about ten or twelve years, and then you have to have it redid. But it's only like an eighteen hundred dollar process now, I don't know what it's gonna be in twelve years, but.
So I know those old rubber gymnasium flooring, that they put that in like the sixteen, seventies, and they roll that, you can see the seam line.
No, can't see the seam, looks like a solid linoleum floor.
Great.
Did you use the same machine to clean that, Mark?
Yeah, same machines, everything.
Was this the only bid that we got, or?
Yes.
Yeah. What's six plus two mean, what, is that like a measurement? Is that, it says six plus two elastic plus athletic flooring, is that like, is that?
There's a, there's a thickness, and what it came down to was what we could go with with the thresholds and whatnot, because they have to pour.
Yeah.
And this, you know, covers on top, so, that's the, uh, the unit they have to use. It's just a measurement of, uh, the.
Yeah, so.
Pat.
What is the warranty, Mark?
Oh, come on. I don't have, uh, that information with me.
Okay, it just says manufacturer's standard warranty, I just, you don't know if it's ten year, twenty year, or?
It's ten years.
Eight year?
Eight year, six months, I don't like it. Yeah, but I don't have that with me, I wouldn't be honest, tell you that.
We've been pretty happy with this company, so.
Yeah, everyone had an issue or something that we didn't like, they came right up, took care of it.
Mark, did you go and see this product somewhere else, like onsite, or?
I have not.
Okay.
I have not. Well, it is, it's, uh, the stuff, it just started off about when, when we was talking about it, you know, something more Christian. And we went to Stuart Anderson, talked with him about different things. I've seen a product similar to it, which, uh, there's one in, uh, over in, um, like, Wolfboro, um, but anyways, it's a, it's a multi-use, uh, room that they basically use for people eating, and then the kids, uh, the young kids play in the room. And, uh, but anyways, uh, I thought it was fine, I mean, I really, you know, I'd say something that's got a pad to it.
Yeah.
You know, the product's pretty much the same. There's a couple of different companies that make the stuff, and I just fell for the class sports boards, where we've had such good luck with them.
Yeah.
Well, with them.
Okay.
Mark, do you know if it covers, if the warranty, I know you don't know how long it covers, do you know if it covers the fading of the stuff, like the Noraflooring? Noraflooring?
Yes.
Covers fading?
Well, it's, uh, it's, you're not supposed to have any of that problem, the only problem, and when I say problem, the only thing is, is after ten to twelve years, they say you should, uh, burnish it and refinish it. That, that's a long time compared to what, like, uh, the VCT or any of that stuff. Now, my biggest concern when I was looking at this was how tear resistant it was, and, uh, they warranty against tears.
Was that like the, there was some samples here, I think, for district?
That was the stuff, yes.
That was the stuff, okay, that's those teams, remember.
Yeah.
Alright, any other questions, or?
So, appearing none, should I make a motion of going to contract with Linwood Sports Flooring for the installation of our new elementary multi-purpose gymnasium state school?
And thank you, Ben. A second, please?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Presenting?
I said aye.
Alright, okay.
Let's look at the warranty online.
Okay, ten year? Alright, confirmed. Uh, next item is the bond bank loan agreement. WCA is more.
Yeah, so again, we, we've been approved, we've been filling out a lot of paperwork, we've been approved, uh, through the bond bank and through, uh, New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank and through, um, the bond council, um, for the selling of the bond, for the bond sale that's coming up in June, for the element, uh, for the high school science room. So, this is the next step in the process, um, in connection with the municipal bond, that the issuer is selling to the bond bank, we are attaching a loan agreement by and between the issuer and the bond bank, and a certificate regarding the adoption of a vote by the issuer's governing body, authorizing the issuer to enter into the loan agreement with and sell its bond to the bond bank. So, basically, we have a loan agreement that we need the school board to approve us to go in, so we can issue the, the bond. So, basically, you, we need to, the governing body needs to take a vote to authorize the issuer to enter into the loan agreement with and sell its bond to the bond bank. We need to have that noted in our minutes, um, we'll have a certificate signed that you guys took a vote, so we can just.
Issue will be administered?
Yeah, the, or the district, yeah. Yeah, and they can pass around the loan agreement, but it's just a standard municipal, New, New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank agreement, again, that the bond council has gone through all that.
So, we just, so we can send a motion to authorize you to sign the loan agreement?
Yeah, to enter into the loan agreement, yeah.
I make a motion to, uh, authorize the administration to enter to a loan agreement behalf of the district.
Sir. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you, Joe. That's fine, I'm not, you're telling me this is this name, this name is the bond, so.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Alright. Uh, no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, present.
No second, no second to that.
Joe.
Joe did it.
Yeah. Uh, moving on, new business, um, we have no new business, Frank, on this?
I have new business for the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, Stuart Anderson would like to come in with the early act group and present to the board a new sign for the elementary playground.
Okay, great.
And the kids are gonna come in and present.
Okay. So, they'll come to the next meeting?
And also, uh, Ginny and staff would like to come in next meeting to present the new math program that they started using this year.
Will we go for those at the June meeting?
May.
May.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, still.
That's boring, alright.
Yeah.
Don't pass it, we need that.
Okay, uh, moving on to continuing business, uh, one item we have there is the scheduled survey, uh, which we had on their last week, their last meeting. Uh, and we moved it off, so people would have time to kind of look through it and digest. Um, and so this, this began as, you know, as the schedule changes here to include the extended period days on Tuesday and Wednesday, which allows them to double up classes from forty-eight minutes to hour and a half classes. Um, and as the board, or it probably came from me, and for, I suggested that we do a survey midway through the year of the staff and of the students, uh, to see how it was working out, to see if this was the ideal situation, and get everybody's feedback on that. Uh, I don't know if everybody's had a chance to, to look through the survey, if they have any, um, comments, questions, input?
I, I had a little bit, so I, I didn't get it, I wasn't here last day, I didn't get it till today. So, that the high school one is what I'm looking at. And there are, it's like there's six different questions that are, that are graphed for us.
Yeah.
And like half of them look really close in responses, and the other half, they're definitely heavy, one response versus the others. But it looks like we, we left like a third of our present students didn't take the survey, or like forty kids didn't take it, which is a big number, so I'm wondering why they never won't take the survey. I mean, because if, if half of the questions are very close, that forty percent or forty kids could have really dragged and changed it. For the ones that were not close, those forty kids could have, I, I mean, I, I'm not sure.
Why do you say that? Because I didn't, I didn't.
Fifty-seven kids took the survey, it looks like.
Oh, I was gonna say the total of the kids, or you're just?
Well, we're right in front of a hundred.
Some would say fifty-five is, some would say fifty-seven.
Right, so like, we have like close to a hundred, right?
Okay.
Nine point five, so, like, that's a big, this is a great survey, I think, but there's a huge number of kids that didn't take it, so.
It was offered in the same manner to all students, no, I said, so it was just, it was, they were put out through the advisory and they're put in a.
So, some decided not to do it. Okay. I tried, that was like, if it was supposed to, to send it to certain classes, or just?
It was all, it was all, it was I sent it to every student.
Okay, alright, well then, I guess that's all.
That is odd that fifty percent of the students would just choose not to take it?
I, I guess.
I was also trying to, but some of the teachers' comments, they, they didn't seem to like it very much.
I mean, middle school, when you look at the middle school, there were, stick with some of the number taking it, there was sixty students that, that took the survey, I mean, that's.
It's about, that's almost.
I'd say that's probably the high ninety percent, I don't think it's nine, nine percent of the student body did the survey. Um, I think there's, there's definitely two different feelings here, you know, just ba- just based on the survey.
I think it gives a lot of information.
It, it does, um.
Really does, it's very good, it'd be very helpful.
Yeah, I mean.
And it's interesting though, because when you look at the graphs for all three, they sort of pose one view, but then when you read the answers, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't always match up, or, or like the written questions.
Yeah, I think personally for me, the goal was to kind of, what I would like to see come out of survey is pretty simple. Um, how people are utilizing that time, whether it be students or teachers. Um, and I think we get a little bit more of the open questions, uh, towards the end. Um, and I find that, um, I don't wanna be too critical over the process, because it was, this was a, like, ended up being a teacher-driven survey. With some of the questions, I think, I think we had too many questions on here, and some questions have probably went over kids' heads a little bit, or didn't, didn't really apply, as far as, you know, asking, you know, my eleven-year-old middle school student the schedule of preparing her for college and career. Um, and I think, you know, when you ask questions in that manner, they think, oh, so that's why we're doing this, you know, okay. They put the schedule in place to start for college and career.
One of the, one of the difficulties to, to address that concern is that, something else that we found was like, in trying to keep it as, trying to keep the questions some of as consistent as possible, and so that's where you have a little, it was, that was a difficulty.
Okay.
You know, trying to keep it similar, so you, you want to, I guess one of the goals was to be able to compare, was that, so that, that did become a difficulty, which I can understand.
Yeah, and then question four, it says that, you know, the current alternating seven period and extended period schedule provides students daily access to their teachers. But the way the schedule's set up, that clearly can't happen on Tuesdays, right?
Well, it's several teachers' responses where I can't, I don't have, I can't.
I know, but I'm just looking at the graph, you know, where, you know, thirty, fifty percent say, yes, that's true, but, you know, they have F L T on Wednesdays when it is true, but on Tuesdays, it's only seen three or four teachers. It's not a big deal, I just think it was a, a, you know, the, the, the question maybe didn't help, I don't know, so. And I'd say, like I said, just, just go back to the, the general feeling of it, I think you, you've got two very different approaches. I think that the, it's not what middle school wants, you know.
Yeah. Or the teachers, or the middle school.
An obligation, um, you know, is, is age, I mean, kids in middle school are coming out of elementary school, they may not have the attention span for full two.
I don't think, you know, high schoolers.
Period. Well, I mean, that's prob, yeah, that's a whole issue altogether, but if six, six, seventh, eighth graders struggle with the ten, with their attention span, so maybe, it, it seems like there was, I mean, I guess with the limited response, although a majority positive response in the high school, and a majority negative response in the middle school, um, and they were considering modifying it, so it's not uniform across both, if that's possible.
So, one of, one of the reasons about having a uniform schedule across both was that we, one of the challenges we had prior was that we had students who were in the middle school and wanted to access high school classes. Uh, and so we were having some difficulties where we were having, um, students, for example, would, would say they want to take a, a high school class, they would take, because they could work within their middle school schedule, they would take the first half of the class, leave halfway, go to the middle school class, have their class, come back when that same class is offered in different sections later today, complete the second half. So, that, and that's, that's just an example, but that's one of the things, talking about the uniform, just to give some background of why we were looking for.
How many students is that, though?
Enough that we thought it was, that's, looking.
Middle, middle school students that are taking high school classes?
We wanted to, I, I really wanted to provide at least the option. So, it can, it can, so Jay, I mean, it can change year to year.
I mean, if we have like forty out of sixty students saying that they don't like it, because it's hard for them to keep focused for that period of time, and we're, we're causing trouble for that many students, because three or four of them want to take high school classes.
Right.
And mind, we need to think about what's gonna get the best of them.
Right, mind you, Jay, I'm not saying that as an argument, but rather, A, just to give you some historical background of why the reason was.
Yeah.
I think the other challenge with making schedules, it seems like from year to year, perfectly come on, is when it comes to the shared special teachers. You know, if someone's gonna have a middle school schedule, it doesn't matter, up to the high school schedule, which someone could go down and then you could go to the R and, and create a challenge. And yeah, and to expand upon that, if you have, you have shared, you have, you have, you have pulled into groups, you have a just high school staff, you have a just middle school staff, you have a staff that was even six to twelve, and then you have a case.
Right.
So, that, it, because then you gotta line the schedule up with what's happening in this particular one, so, yeah, just the rest of it.
This is no perfect.
So, what is the process for designing a schedule, it's like, was that have to change every year, is it up to?
No, they, I, I know the administrative team hasn't, hasn't reviewed the, you know, together as a team, we really don't have that time to talk about, just about, you know, looking at it individually.
Well, I just mean like, normally, like, throughout the years, it's like something, it's something in the summer, and.
Typically, it's been a reason.
So, my, my call, kind of like, which I would say is, do we consider this just an exercise, or are we looking to take it out and say, uh, it's really work, it's good with, or she has not enough people on board, and you're not changing, that's a sample.
Well, well, I think there's some good information there.
Absolutely, yeah.
For the team to, to look at, and will certainly look at it, you know, and see, um, what, how we can tweak it.
We can change, that makes sense, yeah.
And, and meet the needs of, of.
Because there, there's a lot of positive, you know, positives to it, and then there's a lot that, um.
I think so, you're, you're, I need to want to, as a, as a teacher, I guess, either you would. That's the challenge, just, I think, the administration needs to figure out. These guys, these guys.
And maybe put out a survey that says, why didn't you fill out the survey? And would you consider taking it? Like, what's the reason, because you hate it so much that you don't want, or that you don't think that your actors will be?
Can I, well, I'm an advisor for the junior class, and for the longest time, like freshman and sophomore year, I'd send out emails to them.
Yeah.
And they said, they just don't check their emails, that was their answer to me, so I don't know if that is anything to do with anything?
Was it submitted through email, or was it hard copy, too?
It was, uh, it was definitely, uh, through email.
I think we should do a hard copy, like.
Because I used to do surveys all the time, like, who, where, where do you want to do this and this, whatever, and then they'd always tell me, oh, we don't check our email. So, I don't know if that's the case, I just thought I would shoot that out there. Never know.
I mean, it was, it was sent out as a survey, uh, in email, but there was also a, it was a verbal, there was a, it was a, through advisory for teachers to remind. And, and some students didn't, chose not to.
Could we extend, could we like send it out again, or, or do like, you know, just try it again more frequently?
I think, I think if it was done via email, the kids who do it are gonna do it again. I, I think in hindsight, if we should, if we're copying, hard copying, we might, we might not get a hundred percent of like a.
But we, we're, we're moving to, I feel like you, we're trying, we could do some other things, like more electronic and so on.
Like, I'm actually.
Yeah, but we, we would've talked about electronic. Yeah, but we, we've been talking about electronic agendas and stuff for years, and we still get.
But I, I'll say this, as far as surveys go, I find that, you know, I do surveys with my teams, and I do everything like my plate, and I get nearly a hundred percent response, it's a matter of giving that to them, and and I think the hard copy, we probably get less difficult to say that, you know, we really can't hold them forward, doing it, or they're just gonna go, okay, I need to get out of here. Uh, I think that, you know, if you're doing, if you, if you do a survey during a set period of time, like you did during advisory, and you said, hey, here's, here's the survey monkey link, it's up on the board, everybody grab a phone book, pull out your phone, since it's in their hands anyway, they're done for now. I think part of the reason for having it online was from some of the conversations we've had, you know, we've made more bad blood, you know, as far as like, it's, it's how quick you can be done.
Or could offer incentive, if you complete this thoughtfully, and take your time, you get like a hack or something.
One of those, I love those things.
Exactly.
Part of the city's class.
I think that, you know, looking at the, the whole of it, it seemed that probably two thirds of the teachers said that they'd like the schedule set up the way that it is, and it's probably more in the high school than the middle school, so you're not reading through it, the different things. I found that, you know, with the, with the students' responses, everything kind of floated around fifty percent, and if you, if you did a different survey and said, would you prefer a seven period schedule, it'd still be around fifty percent. And so I think it's a, it's up to administration to find a balance that's working best for the students, yeah, we want to keep the, the teachers happy, and be able to, you know, have them have those opportunities. I know, you know, maybe one of the driving forces is when you talk about science projects, art projects, I know the art, instead of trying to jam everything into forty eight minutes, I have those extended periods. But it's an hour and a half is a long time, for, for kids of any age, and, and when it comes to specific subjects as well, for, for a number of kids. And I think the driving force for me behind this was, I coached kids for six months, and I listened to them at the beginning of the practice, you know, before they get started, and complaining about, you know, Tuesdays and Wednesdays, Tuesdays and Wednesdays. So it's interesting that we get fifty five replies back from the high school students, and they all love it the way it is. I mean, I, I heard a lot of the other way mapped out.
Yeah, that's really good to vent to, though, you know.
But it's just interesting that it come through here, and, and, and speaking on a, a personal note, it's, you know, when I ask my own child who's in high school, what do you think of this, and it's like, an hour and a half's long, but it gives me time to, you know, do my, get my homework done, so I have less stuff to do at home. I don't know if that's the ideal reasoning, we want to do an hour and a half class, um, and, you know, unfortunately not every student's at studios utilizing that time. But again, that's, uh, that's not on us to figure out, but I think the, the message is kind of clear that, you know, at one level, they, they like it more than they aren't.
That was good information.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly worth noting that we would expect in preparation for college, I mean, most colleges, you're not seeing a teacher every day, and most colleges, you, you are, you know, an hour, ninety minute classes, it's, it's normal, and ninety minute classes are three hours, so, you know, as far as like getting the kids comfortable with that, if it, even if it's a little bit difficult, maybe middle school might be a little early to start that, but I mean, it certainly there's a benefit, there is value in that as well. Just a, from a preparedness standpoint.
Anything else?
I'll just go there.
The only thing I, I want to add, um, for you guys moving forward with whatever the schedule looks like next year, um, I think I mentioned this to Judy a while back, I was panning through different policies, looking for some information, and I came across an instructional distribution schedule, it's policy I F dash R, which is required, um, per the New Hampshire Code of Administration rules. And what it is, we have to set up how much time we are dedicating a day to each subject. You know, there's a section through K to five, and a section through six to eight, and, you know, this policy's eleven years old, you know, R R policy's eleven years old, so, you know, in there, it says that middle school should be getting sixty minutes a day of math, science, and social studies, and ninety minutes a day of English language and reading, and we're definitely not complying with that. So I think this is a policy that needs to be reworked to, to match our schedule going forward.
What was the name of that policy?
It's uh, I F dash R.
We can add to the next policy meeting, to, just to, just to dust it off and what we have.
Well, I think it, it might be something to look at towards the end of the summer, after administration has set up what they want the schedule to look like, if there's gonna be any kind of change.
Yeah, 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 she asked you to do the schedule.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Well, yeah, we do have the, the principal coming in, so we need some ideas as well.
Right, or it could be very simply where you set that at a forty five minute instead of a sixty minute, and if we have classes that are forty eight minutes or fifty minutes or whatever, of this schedule itself, or at least reaching that, the minimum in the policy. And of course, so that.
Before we move forward, I think it might be helpful to note that fourteen middle schoolers, when asked, what changes would you suggest, uh, responded, keep the block day, the law blocks, because sometimes you always get things done.
Yeah.
So, that's how they feel.
Yeah.
And one student said, make it quieter or something.
About, yeah.
That's one of the most useful.
Yeah, it's not interesting that the, the kids who wanted to keep block day, put it all in caps with three exclamation points, the twenty seven kids that wanted to get rid of it did not. Do the full faculty.
They're very direct.
Okay, so let's check that out. Uh, Scott, Miss Steve?
Oh my goodness, here we are. Boo.
How do you feel about block days?
Well, I'm a science teacher, so I tend to be on the side that we, we like a little longer time now and then, so, yeah. Um, but I did fill out this survey, so you'll never know what's coming.
What if I can guess?
Might be, especially at the middle school, we only have six of us, and it's like, hmm, yeah, maybe I'm the one out of the six.
You were, you were the one that agreed.
They're all blended together.
Oh, they shuffle them, so they.
Yeah, you don't know.
No worries. Um, Carol Smith just reported that today she found out that, um, the public and school libraries were successful in obtaining a grant from the Children's Literacy Foundation, and will be receiving five hundred dollars worth of new children's books, two story, storytelling presentations, one in the fall and one in the spring for all elementary students, and the opportunity for all elementary students to select two new books of their choice at the spring storytelling event. The public library and childcare center will also benefit from the grant. For Mrs. Krill, some of the high school students have been invited to perform their poetry aloud poems at the Frost Place on May twenty second, with students from Lisbon, Profile, Littleton, and the White Mountain School. Also, Linwood was one of ten community organizations to receive recognition at the first annual Children's Mental Health Matters Awards, due to our high percentage of students who participated in the Magnify Voices film and essay competition. Lastly, signups have begun for our thirteenth season of Girls of Summer. Uh, Mrs. Nickel and Miss Savard would like to report that the third graders did an outstanding job presenting poems of their choice to the elementary school community and parents on April sixteenth, and on May thirtieth at noon, they will present their Native American research as well. Uh, Ms. Pamplin and myself would like to share that we had a successful collaboration today between kindergarten and grade seven, with the middle school students presenting information about wood frogs. They created a card game, poster, original book, and a puppet show, even with a sing-along. Thanks to a late evening walk with Ms. Helm, we both have, um, we're raising frog eggs in our classrooms and learning about vernal pools. The seventh graders really stepped it up to make some fun projects, and we enjoyed seeing the mix of students ask each other great questions, share what they know, and learn about science, so it's pretty cool.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Community? Okay. And I don't think we have anything on the dock for non-public? No? Okay. If you, Jay, if you, Vance, all in favor?
Aye.
Wow.
I am on fire.
Must be summer.